Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Okay, we're going to start with county commissioners. Tom?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Call to order the March 26, 2025 county commissioners' meeting at 5:30 PM. First is announcements. The county commission meeting is being audio and video recorded. Next up is public comment for items not on our agenda. And just to note, we will, the select board will be having public comment for the select board meeting. See none online? This is county commissioners. We're going to throw it over select board after this? Does that work? Thank you, sir. There's no new business. Approval of minutes and warrants. Is there a motion?
Second.
Moved by Matt, second by Malcolm. We're all here tonight, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That passes unanimously. Next up is official business. Number one, update on Sheep's Pond Road alternate access. Libby?
Thank you. I'm going to turn it over to our real estate specialist in a moment, but I wanted to let the board know there are, we're getting, we're getting there with developing and getting into place the alternative access for Sheep Pond Road, which, as you know, is necessary because of erosion in the area. And in no particular order, we are working on a memorandum of understanding with the Nantucket Conservation Foundation, whose land is required for the installation of the new road, and that requires a transaction within which we are conveying property to the foundation in exchange for them allowing this road to go over their property. We're working on, and I think we have it pretty well approved, a temporary easement extension with parties on Head of Plains Road, which has been being used for the alternative access as needed. We have a lot of documents that have to be completed for this transaction with the foundation. We will need natural heritage, state agency approval for the new road. That is getting to be in progress. We will need to construct the new road. We have a plan for the new road. And then, at some point very soon, we will be initiating the betterment process, and that includes a hearing, notifications, board votes, and things of that nature, and communications to the abutters. So Tracy, I think you're going to, that's a, that's a general update. If you want to add anything to that, please feel free. And I think Tracy's going to take us through the other Sheep Pond Road related items on this agenda.
Tracy?
Yes, thank you. So this is kind of a brief update since we did our presentation in January. And we've been working diligently. Vicki Marsh has, has really been working hard on the different documentation, as Libby noted. So with that, part of the choice that they needed to make was to choose the roadway and what style, design. And those were at different levels of cost. There were three choices that they were provided, and they chose the least expensive and lowest impact choice. My understanding is that this was also the preference of the Nantucket Conservation Foundation. And once they determined the roadway choice, then they were on board with the betterment assessment, and that process, as Libby stated, is, is part of like a separate process. So, once they got the betterment going and the, and the roadway going, Vicki was able to hone in with the negotiations and the finalization towards the memorandum of understanding. However, the council to Nantucket Conservation Foundation has been away, so we haven't been able to get their input with that memo of understanding. But they're supposed to be back next week. And then, in the meantime, we were able to secure the extension for the temporary easement. We received a six-month extension, and that's in the process of execution. And so I'm requesting, sort of the second matter is to request the county commissioners execute that document today, because that, that extension expires the end of this month. And then we're working with the surveyor to develop a final easement plan. Now that we know which road, you know, the type and style of the road we're going to get, we need something more definitive for, for the permitting process and to attach to the, the permanent easement agreement between the Sheep Pond residents and Nantucket Conservation Foundation, excuse me. So that brings me to the next part. The Sheep Pond Residence Council has prepared a draft permanent easement agreement between them and Nantucket Conservation Foundation. That also will need to be reviewed by the foundation. And the MOU provides that that permanent easement agreement should be executed within 30 days of the MOU being executed. So that way, we don't delay the permitting process, which is going to be crucial to be having that move forward. And when we have the MOU fully executed, we can apply, we can update the application to natural heritage and, and work towards those permitting approvals. And as soon as we have that, then we can stake the roadway and, and start the construction. And, you know, we are very focused on those primary tasks in order to meet the, the six month deadline of the temporary easement. And then there are lots of other things, as, as Libby stated, conditions and, and agreements between the town and Nantucket Conservation Foundation that we'll be working on during that process.
Thank you, Tracy. Any commissioners' questions or comments for the real estate specialist?
I'll make a motion to approve the, what's in our packet, approve the six-month temporary extension license.
Execute of temporary easement?
Yes.
Agreement, as outlined in our packet, Matt?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, moved by Matt, second by Dawn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes aye. That's approved. Thank you, Tracy, for all your work. Lot of moving parts on that.
And one quick comment. When, when I talk about the state rules not catching up with the reality of sea level rise, this is a perfect example of that, where we required to provide the roads, but the roads are disappearing. This is the second or third time that I've, that we've dealt with this. And so, and it's not as simple. Some people sometimes think, oh, and you can just abandon a road. See, there's a rule, you can abandon it. And it's not that simple. You can't abandon it if there's a use. You can't abandon it if people need, you know, need access to their homes or need their utilities. It's not as simple as it's made out to be. And then, you know, this, this is being done cooperatively, and the neighbors are all, you know, involved in saying, okay, we'd like this level of road, and we're willing to pay for it, and you can do a betterment, and we aren't going to, you know, we're not going to oppose your betterment, and we're not going to tie you up, you know? And so I think this is, this is a good example of, you know, we're working with them, and it's very difficult, but we are getting there. But it's not, you know, sometimes it's, sometimes the public comments we get make it seem like this is a simple process, and it's anything but. So thank everybody for all the work they're doing getting to this point.
Thanks, Mike. Good, good, good points. Any other additional commissioners' comments?
I just have, I wanted to give an update. The MPNDC reviewed alternative design plans for the Tom Nevers Bike Path and BPAC's recommendation, and we voted on a recommendation, and then it's going to come to the commissioners for final approval. So you will all see that as well. But that's moving forward.
Sounds good. Sounds good. Seeing no additional comments, is there a motion? We've reached the end of our agendas. Motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second?
Moved by Dawn, second by Brooke. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We are adjourned. Madam Chair?
Okay, great. So now a call to, call to order the March 26, 2025 select board meeting at 5:40 PM. And we have no changes to the agenda, and we'll go to announcements. Libby?
Thank you. This meeting is being video and audio recorded. We have a town-wide informational session on the proposed new Our Island Home facility. This will be tomorrow, Thursday, March 27th, starts at 5:30 PM. It will be in this room and also remote, and the remote information is available on the town website and on the, this select board agenda. We also have some upcoming open houses that are in connection with the new Department of Public Works proposed facility, and those are going to be held on Saturday, April 5th and Saturday, April 19th. We really hope people will come out and take advantage of these open houses and see why we are seeking a new facility for the Department of Public Works. And information on that is also on the town website. The planning department is inviting residents to a two-part master plan visioning program on April 4th and 5th. This is to help shape Nantucket's future, and you can participate in person at the high school cafeteria. And there's more information online about that. And the next announcements are Nantucket Lights. I think the director's going to speak of, introduce it.
Go ahead, Gail. You need to unmute.
Sorry.
There you go.
Number one. Well, thanks for considering our request and for the opportunity to speak in favor of it. For the record, I'm Gail Walker, the founder and president of Nantucket Lights, which is a citizen advocacy group dedicated to reducing light pollution on Nantucket, to preserve our nighttime environment and starry nights. We're proposing that you once again show your support for the preservation of those by adopting a proclamation in support of this year's International Dark Sky Week. That's a week in April each year when people all over the world celebrate the dark and natural night, raise awareness about the harm from light pollution, and promote the use of environmentally responsible outdoor lighting. This year, the dates for it are October 21st through April, sorry, April 21st through April 28th. The proclamation that we have proposed is identical to the one that the select board adopted last year. Since it's part of the meeting package, I'll just briefly summarize it. It recognizes that the beauty and wonder of the natural night sky on Nantucket is a part of our heritage that should be protected and preserved. It notes all the ways that light pollution, light pollution's harmful to people as well as wildlife beyond making it harder to see the stars at night. It declares April 21st through April 28th, 2025 to be International Dark Sky Week on Nantucket, and calls upon all residents to commit to learning more about light pollution and the steps they can take to reduce it. Adopting this would help inspire everyone to do their part to reduce light pollution on the island so that we don't lose our view of the stars in the Milky Way the way so many other communities have. Unless we get light pollution under control, that's where we're headed, along with more light trespassing in bedrooms, more unsafe glare. So thank you for considering our request. Of course, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions from the board or a motion to adopt?
I'll move we adopt.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Thank you, Gail.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other select board announcements or comments? Nobody? Okay. Okay. Update on public comments from prior select board meetings. Last week, Cliff Williams asked for a summary of how the Affordable Housing Trust evaluates purchases of land. And the select board has referred that to the Affordable Housing Trust for a response, but I want to be realistic about response time. The housing director is just coming back from parental leave and has a long to-do list. So it has been referred, and hopefully we'll get a response to that question as soon as possible. That's it on that. And now it's time for public comment for items not on the agenda. I want to be clear that the warrant is on the agenda for select board comments. I will not be taking public comment with regard to the warrant. And other than that, are there any other public comments for items not on the agenda?
George Ellis. In 2020, the town agreed to accept $34.4 million over 45 years from Vineyard Wind as financial mitigation for the planned 84 offshore turbines. In February 2023, more than a year before the July 2024 blade collapse and beach pollution, Greg Workheiser, the lawyer for Cultural Heritage Partners, the special legal counsel to the town for offshore wind, said, said that the offshore wind farm could cost the town $815, $815 million in tourism over 30 years. He added, quote, "And that's not including a single dollar of reduction of property values or inflation," unquote. I and many others believe that financial mitigation will not reverse the environmental impact, the pollution, the harm to the marine life, and the loss of our historic ocean views. My question is, where does the town of Nantucket stand on negotiations on additional financial compensation, given that the town's legal counsel calculated a loss of $815 million for tourism, not including a single dollar for reduction in property values in 2023, and prior to the devastating and polluting blade collapse in 2024? And on a related topic, it was just reported in the Nantucket Current that additional drilling to assess water resources offshore Nantucket will commence May 1st, just five weeks away. This project seems risky in view of the increased number of whale deaths in the last 12 months, probably related to drilling and sonar noise and additional boat traffic. Has the select board reviewed the permits for this project to ensure that there are no, there will be no additional harm to Nantucket or beaches and our marine life, including the endangered North Atlantic right whale? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Okay. Any other public comments? I'm not seeing any hands raised. Matt?
Matthew P. I just wanted to encourage the town and the select board to possibly revisit the roundabout project over at Old South and Fairgrounds Road. I don't know if you guys have driven it this week, but it has been horrid. And so it's been backed up all the way. I think one morning I was going into work, and it was backed up almost from stop sign to, all the way back to the airport road. And so I think, you know, what was that, 2018 or 19? That, that kind of pilot project was there. And I think, you know, I think you'd see more, a lot more support for it now with the amount of traffic and other vehicles, commercial vehicles that we have on Old South, and especially back in the Richmond and Greigland area. So, thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Anyone else for public comment? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to approval of minutes, warrants, and pending contracts.
So moved.
Okay. On all three, Matt?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I almost said by roll call. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Okay. Onto real estate items. Tracy?
Or Libby, do you want to introduce, or shall I just go straight to Tracy? Please go straight to Tracy. Okay.
Thank you.
Tracy, you're up.
So I got this biggie yard sale parcel transaction that I'm going to present. So the Folger Road parcel shown on Plan 2021-68 is a clear example of the unconstructed paper road scenario that the yard sale program was built on. The six abutters who were all interested in acquiring their parcels have come together to, to do this as, as one big group conveyance instead of doing multiple select board meetings. This, this transaction was authorized at the 2015 annual town meeting, and the select board did the taking in the fall of 2022. And then the group came together. They engaged attorney Jesse Brescher to streamline the process for them. She prepared all the deeds, and she worked out some necessary easements between them. She delivered it all for review to town council. It went to the real estate assessment committee in December, and then the coastal resilience assessment was also done in December. And then, since that time, Jesse's worked in cooperation with the staff and town council to acquire all the documentation, necessary signatures, and the finalization of settlement statements, and delivered everything ready to go. It's an example of how I'd like to achieve big results and convey all six parcels at once. And I'm asking the select board to agree and approve and convey the six transactions.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Just one. Tracy, by doing it in this manner with, you know, five or six different people, was this a lot easier for staff as well?
It was, Matt. You know, it was really helpful to have Jesse kind of pull it together. She, you know, she handled the group so that, you know, it was all pre-negotiated, which was also helpful. If this was taken on an individual basis, it might not have turned out the same way. And so I do think it was easier. Definitely was less time for me. It's also unregistered parcels. There's no land court involved, so that also made it easier.
Yeah. That, you know, that's great, because, you know, a lot of these, it takes us so much time and years. I wonder why are we even doing it? But if it's, if it's a situation like this, I think it's great.
Yeah. It's, it's a good example of how collaboration makes things a lot smoother. Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board or a motion?
I'll move to accept the documents, approve the documents.
Approve and execute?
Yeah, execute the documents.
Okay.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Okay. Next up is, I'll let, I'll just let you do it rather than reading it.
Okay. Erica very kindly listed out all the very detailed particulars in your, in the agenda, but I'm going to try to streamline it a bit. So this, this is part of the Surfside Transportation Project, and the homeowners at the 88R Skyline Drive property was, it was identified as a key location for some drainage infrastructure to remediate the drainage issues in the area. The owners very kindly agreed to grant a permanent non-exclusive easement in exchange for the town conveying the easement rights in the paper roads that ran through their property. The town took those paper road easements last year in May pursuant to Plan 2024-8. And in anticipation of the project construction, the memorandum of understanding memorializing the obligations between the town and CBE Skyline Nominee Trust, which is the owner of the property, has been prepared by town council and reviewed by attorney Arthur Reed, who's, who I believe is on tonight, if there are questions. And his clients have agreed and executed the memo of understanding. And we have also prepared a grant of drainage easement, which was reviewed and executed by the parties. And those easements are shown on this plan that Erica's showing now, 2025-1, it's, is where it's recorded. So I'm requesting approval and execution of the memo of understanding and the acceptance of the drainage easement, and as per the agreement for the select board to execute the release of the easements in the paper roads.
Okay. Comments, questions, or a motion?
Can I, just can we put up 139, put up the map again? And just, yeah, paper road map. I just, just where was the, I was trying to figure out where the easement was for the drainage and where the, because the drain, one was 26,000, 26,000 square feet, I think, and the other was substantially more. So what is what? What are we giving and what are we, you know, what are we swapping?
Okay. So Erica, are you able to? Are these the construction ones?
Sorry, what?
Which plan is this one? Is this a?
This is the taking plan.
Okay. I think, I think Matt's looking at the, the easement plan, the other one.
We even go, just if you run us through this one and the other one, just so people know what we're doing.
Um, so you got to scroll down a little bit. So it's hard for me to see on my screen, but there, there are various different paper roads that run, as you can see, like directly through their property. And they, they own them in fee, but they're easement rights. So the town took the easement rights, so those could be eliminated from their, from their parcel, and they'll have, you know, clean title to that. So it's, it's hard to see on this plan, but it's, it's these ones that are sort of like running through here.
That makes sense. I get it now. Thanks.
Sorry, it's, it's hard to see from remote. But, and then when you skip to the, this plan, this is the, the big easement is this here. Yeah. And then, and we're going to segue into the next easement, which is the same plan, which is sort of the access to the area.
Okay. That's good. Thank you.
Can I, can I note one thing, too?
Sure.
In this Skyline Drive area, you have released easements in other properties. There were like ghost paper roads. So it would be in keeping with what you've done in other parcels.
And this is in exchange?
Yeah. No, I think it's important, I just think it's important people to understand it, or for me to understand it. I have old eyes, and I was struggling reading it to figure out what was what. So thank you.
Any other questions? Pleasure, the board?
Move approval?
Second.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Arthur. So as I said, we're going to segue into the second property, which is located at 40 Lover's Lane, and it's on that same 2025-1 plan that Erica had up earlier. And so this will be sort of the access point to that bigger easement area on the Engelhard's property, on the, the 8 Skyline property, so that they can access the, the area for equipment maintenance. And I think, believe that's going to be on a type of a maintenance schedule. And so similar to the above, the Johnsons agreed to grant a permanent drainage easement in exchange for some driveway aprons and some plantings. And those terms are memorialized in the memo of understanding, and which was also prepared by town council and reviewed by the owner's council, Keith Yanko. And it's, you know, so the memo's been executed by Julianne, and also, I believe, the permanent easement has also been executed. And I'm just seeking the same, same idea, the select board to approve and execute the grant of these easements. Well, actually, execute the memo of understanding and the acceptance of easement. Sorry.
Great. Thanks, Tracy. Any questions? Motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay. Thanks for all that, Tracy. Appreciate all the work that goes into it. And next up is the town manager's report.
Thank you. So we have our usual formatted report here, and I typically only go over the items. Lots of things are very active, but we're just picking a few of the more active ones right at the moment. And we're also working on a little bit of a revamp of this report. So hopefully next time around, you'll see something a little bit different. We are working on the annual town meeting and election prep. As you know, motions are adopted. The select board comments are in progress. You will hopefully finish those off tonight. The warrant goes to the printer at the end of the week. Erica will be spending tomorrow working on it. Please do not, anybody call her or try to talk to her tomorrow. This is, got to get this out. We have a lot of outreach underway. We have videos that we are working on, the voter's guide, project informational sessions. We've got at least 10 separate sessions for various projects. We're working on fact sheets, article summary prep sessions, town meeting, FA- We're working on fact sheets, article summary prep sessions, town meeting FAQs. We're working on a video with NCTV, the comms office, our communications office, and the moderator to answer some questions about town meeting. That should be really interesting. We're in the process of scheduling our focus area team meetings to work on strategic plan implementation following the board's adoption of the strategic plan in January.
Excuse me, Caroline and Matt, could you take it to the hallway? It's very distracting, thank you.
We're prepping for our April issuance of the monthly Town Manager E-News. Road and sidewalk closures and house moves, as we've said before, those are quite constant. And we are working on a roads project update for you all to sometime this month, hopefully. Public records requests are taking an immense amount of time. We are still working to try to develop our job description for our committee coordinator position that had to be taken over by public records requests, but we're trying to get back to the committee coordination. And we have a number of strategic and major initiatives going on. As you all know, the Baxter Road Alternative Access and SPPF GEO2 project is very active right now. And there is internal discussion progressing regarding the assessment of betterments and potential associated legal issues for the Baxter Road Alternative Access Project, that is not to be confused with the GEO2 project. We're working on conceptual license conditions for the GEO2 project and planning a review with the board and public input before town meeting. We talked about that today at the agenda meeting. We just gave you an update about Sheepon Road. We have lots of activity going on with the proposed new Our Island Home project. Our steering committees meeting regularly between one and three times a month. At this point, it's pretty much once a week. We're working on design permitting, other elements of the project. Outreach is well underway. We've had some discussions with the Friends of Our Island Home Group regarding fundraising. We had one of our first outreach sessions with a group yesterday, the Nantucket Town Association. And we're internally discussing next steps if voters do not approve funding for that project. And you all will be getting a project update at your April 9th meeting. Our bid results will be in by then. Long-term solid waste planning, we're well underway with the development and finalization of the Waste Services Agreement with Waste Options, our only bidder for the upcoming landfill operator contract, which expires at the end of November. And we are planning a presentation to you all in April prior to town meeting. And we hope to give time for public input on that. So the idea is to give you an update one week, and then in the next week or two, allow people to look at the document and make comments on it if they wish to before the end of the month. The Wait Drive Seasonal Housing Project is well underway. We're aiming for the end of May to occupy that building. The town parking lot condition review is well underway. Concession buildings, we've talked about this a little bit before. We have done a review of the concession buildings for historic condition and other types of assessments. And that admittedly is on my desk, and I'm trying to find some time to do a quick review of it and then get it to you all for presentation. That hopefully will happen before, say, June. The Washington Street Corridor Downtown Flood Barrier Projects, the design of those is underway, I think you all know about that. There were some community forums online very recently, and we've heard from the Coastal Resiliency Coordinator several times about these projects. The Human Services Grants Review Process led to a recommendation that we conduct a community needs assessment, and that is out for procurement right now to engage a vendor to conduct that assessment. The Surfside Area Roadway, Surfside Area Transportation Improvements, which involve transportation improvements, but also stormwater and utility improvements, that's ongoing. Lots of staff time going into that. Bids went out, I believe, yesterday, so fingers crossed on that. Lots of, I won't even go through PFOS, but there's a lot of activity on PFOS-related issues all listed here in the report. Again, also lots of activity going on with housing initiatives. We did manage to hire a deputy housing director. That individual will start in April. We're excited that he started, and we'll introduce you to him when he arrives. Lots of staffing and personnel management-related activities. We're in the process of filling our social media coordinator position. It was called public outreach coordinator, but that is evidently a bit of an outdated title. So social media coordinator is the new title for that same position. We also are quite active in the wind area, the offshore wind area, including the turbine blade failure and other offshore wind issues. As you all know, we were waiting on the federal agency BESI to schedule a public informational session. We've been put off repeatedly on that. And just some general other activities, we are still working on the use of AI to work on, to apply to minutes and get those hopefully done in a more timely manner in a lot of areas. We're trying to still monitor new and emerging federal mandates. As you know, very initially after the election, there were a lot of executive orders floating around. Those seem to have slowed, but still keeping an eye on them because they may impact us. I'm going to be attending a senior-level public sector executive program called the Athenian Program next week. It is a program through the College of Charleston, it's in South Carolina, and I will give you a full update when I get back. The finance director and I attended the Advisory Committee of Non-Voting Taxpayers back in February. And we recently scheduled, I think you all know this, the annual Nantucket Civic League Summer Forum. And that is scheduled now for Monday, July 21st. And those are most of the major things that we are working on. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions? Okay. All right, next up is select board reports and comments. Review and adoption of select board comments for the May 3, 2025 Annual Town Meeting Warrant Articles. So does any member of the board want to introduce? Tony, we're going to bring something, do you want to talk about yours first?
Sure, yes, it was Article 71, which is the Digital Signs Amendment. And basically, what it is, is asking town meeting for the allowance to put something à la the speed indicator that is on the right side when you go into the Village of Wisconsin. And these would be, this or these depending, would be strategically placed and thoughtfully placed in locations where they are deemed possibly necessary and that may affect vehicular and pedestrian safety. And in my comment, I noted that the neighborhood's general aesthetic and just its sense of environment would be taken into account. So just a short explanation on the article and its intention of why we put it on the warrant.
Yeah, I think it's a great comment. It explains, you know, some of the concerns. We're not going to have these everywhere, so I would move that we accept it.
Do I have a second?
Sure, second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so that comment goes in. Any other suggestions or questions or things to discuss among board members?
Well, I had brought up some of the short-term rental, do we want to take a position on some of them? And I think we may want to be, that was 66 to 69 or something.
Step away.
Sorry, yes, Dawn needs to recuse.
But my understanding, does Mr. Pucci want to talk or warn us, I guess?
So I had a conversation with town council, George Pucci in particular, well, actually both John Giorgio and George Pucci this week, on this question that has been raised about the ongoing litigation. And I think, George, what I would love for you to do is walk us through the process of the adjudication and appeal, et cetera, that you and I talked about on the phone, so the community knows what the likely, you know, the potential process is, not the content. And then also explain your concern about talking about the content of Judge Vay's most recent output on that case, and why you're advising us not to opine on it publicly. Uh oh, George, are you there? You're muted if you are.
I'm here, sorry about that.
That's okay.
We have a new dog at home that we adopted yesterday, so I'm chasing him around. But here I am. And my answer is, my advice to the select board would be not to discuss anything with regard to litigation involving short-term rentals, including the Ward case or the McDermott case. Those are the two cases pending outside of a meeting and executive session. Those cases are under active litigation. And if you do have questions or comments concerning them, I would recommend strongly that take place in executive session and not in connection with any discussion about warrant articles.
Okay, and are you also uncomfortable to talk about litigation process in any way?
Do you have any questions about process? I don't mind updating on the status of, you know, procedural status, but I wouldn't want to get into any type of strategy issues or anything like that.
Yeah, I think what I'm more interested in is we're in process, I mean, and you can just confirm whether, just stop me if I'm headed somewhere you don't think I should go. But that there will be a decision, and then that decision is subject to potential appeal, right? And so I guess the immediacy of impact question, I think, is what I'm trying to get at, if that's appropriate.
Did you say the immediacy of what? I just put my headphones on, sorry.
Yeah, the immediacy of impact, given the potential for appeal. Like, do you understand my question? Like, a decision, what happens if we appeal a decision? And what effect does that have on the application of the decision to our short-term rental? Mark?
Oh, yeah, I mean, I don't, I wouldn't want to get into a potential appeal because we fully expect to win the case. You know, the procedural status of the Ward cases, there was a second trial conducted on the zoning board's decision where they found that that particular rental in question was an accessory use. You know, as you know, you have one of the best zoning boards in the Commonwealth. They did a very lengthy hearing, they followed a roadmap set forth by the court, and they ended up issuing a thoughtful and thorough written decision, which the court conducted a second trial on. The court has issued an order seeking some follow-up information regarding the history of the bylaw. But, you know, and once that's in and all the issues are briefed, then the court will issue a decision sometime down the line, you know, within the next 30 to even 90 days. That's unpredictable, but, so that's at the stage that you're at right now procedurally. So any, you know, our concern was if you're talking about short-term rental articles and the board members had questions or comments on those, I would recommend that those stick to the substance of those articles. In other words, either you like them or you don't, or you have questions or whatever, but it really shouldn't, nothing should be discussed with respect to the lawsuit in connection with those, except for the general proposition, which I think no one would disagree with, is no matter what your expectations are about the court decision, it's always better to exercise your local control over your local issues. So, you know, to the extent that that speaks in favor of having some type of bylaw amendment, you know, that's a policy question. In other words, do you want to try to maintain control over that process and potential amendments to the zoning bylaw? Or sort of take your chances with a court ruling that, you know, they're always, court can be the greatest course in the world, and they, you know, sometimes decisions aren't always what you expect. So, you know, that's the question. But having said that, that doesn't mean that, you know, council has any opinion one way or another of the warrant articles before you. In other words, those are for the select board members to consider and deliberate on and take a position on. So we, you know, other than the fact of just sort of a general policy consideration of we want to do an amendment of the zoning bylaw so that we're not subject to continuous court litigation and the uncertainty of that process, then that speaks in favor of the issue generally, but it doesn't go to the substance of any of the actual warrant articles before you. Hopefully that makes sense?
That is helpful, Matt, is that helpful to you?
Kind of, I think both sides, what I'm hearing from both sides on this still is we're, as a community, we're still, you know, very split. And, but I'm hearing from both sides that if we don't pick one of these articles at town meeting, that, you know, it'll be the end of the world. That if we don't do it one way or we don't do it the other way, you know, that it'll automatically, we won't have rentals or we'll have a million rentals. And so I, you know, I'm wondering, in the process, is that, so if the decision comes down one way or the other, and we appeal, like, without getting into the details of the decision, how, you know, how long does that mean that it's, you know, one side or the other is going to potentially be impacted for that until through the whole thing? Or does the appeal stay any, like, decision? Does the appeal stop any of the bad things that people are worried about? Do you, I'm trying to say it without saying it, but.
Yes, yeah, but I, you know, first of all, you know my philosophy. I don't think that anything other than the end of the world is the end of the world. You know, all of these issues can be dealt with in a neighborly, orderly fashion. And, you know, whatever happens with the court ruling, and again, you know, court rulings are funny. People sometimes do these little decision trees about what they think will happen following a ruling. And then the ruling addresses issues in a manner that you never anticipated. So, you know, I would just recommend just putting on hold that whole consideration. Again, you had a zoning board that deliberated thoroughly on this. They heard evidence, they did a thoughtful written decision. They followed the roadmap of the court and case law governing this issue. You know, we're fully optimistic that that decision will be upheld. In the event that there's some issue that, you know, the both boards would seek to appeal, I can't imagine what that would be, but if that happened, yeah, that would stay that particular issue. So I guess I keep emphasizing the fact and returning to the, you know, to the advice that I would consider the warrant articles on their merits in accordance with your individual preferences or feelings about what needs to be done or what does not need to be done. Focus on them on the merits, but don't feel pressure because there is a pending court case to do something, even if you're not happy with it.
Okay.
Thank you, that was extremely helpful for me, hopefully to the rest of the board as well and in the public. So Matt, do you want to pursue anything at this point, or?
Well, I guess, I mean, I have my own preferences, but I think at this point, I don't think it's necessary. I think it's important that people know that what Mr. Pucci just told us, that, you know, and because we could start talking about them, but we're going to get to town meeting and there's going to be amendments and, you know, et cetera, and they're all going to change. You know, I just would hope that we could find a way through that, you know, gets us there. But we've been trying that for a couple of years now, so, all right.
Okay. Is that it on short-term rentals?
Yeah, I think that's it, that's the only comment, yeah.
So no comment, Dawn, do you want to come back? Okay, are there any articles that the select board wishes to propose or discuss a comment about? Okay. That was quick, relatively quick, okay. Committee reports? Anybody? Okay, so what we need now is a So what we need now is a motion to adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session. And when that happens, the public will have to depart and we will close the Zoom meeting that we're on right now and open a special executive session Zoom meeting. So do I have that motion?
Motion to adjourn to executive, executive session for the reasons stated in the agenda, not to return to open session.
Okay. And do I need a roll call vote or can we take that by voice? Just do it by roll call to make sure. Dawn?
Aye.
Malcolm?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay, thanks everyone out there for being there tonight, out there.